Mike needs to do a test.
What is he doing now?
We're good. Okay, yes.
Want me to take it from the top? You want me to take it from the top? Okay.
Well, let me just tell everybody that we put it on pause because we didn't have audio. And we think we have that fixed now, so go for it.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, we bring before the Board four topics for consideration. The first is a branding overview. You're about to kick off a branding process. I'll detail a little bit more information before I introduce tonight's speaker in a minute. As far as the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, the town has completed their public engagement process, has had the master plan vetted by their Parks and Advisory Board. The Board will consider this potentially at their regular meeting in September. So this will come before you for an overview of what's been completed to date and what will be coming before you in September. You'll also have some tax amendments regarding some of your development ordinances. This will be the items for discussion at a joint, at the joint public hearing in September. And also, as with all things related to COVID, we're having to adapt and we're going to bring some considerations, some alternatives before the Board regarding downtown tree lighting. Depending upon your interest in one of those options, we'll also need for you to make a decision tonight. If you're not interested in this op, in one of the options, then we can roll the conversation forward. So as far as the branding overview, the Board will hear an overview of how communities develop, extend, and apply a brand identity. Feedback from the presentation will inform the scope of work that the branding project funded in this year's budget will encompass. And with that, I'll introduce Aaron Arnett of Arnett, Muldro and Associates.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Aaron Arnett. As Joe mentioned, I'm with Arnett, Muldro and Associates. We're based out of Greenville, South Carolina. We are a city planning firm that also specializes in community branding, and that's what we're going to share with you today. Mike just asked me about how we, as a planning firm, got into community branding. And it goes way back to the, really, when we started our company, we've always been focused on master planning and downtowns. And as you all know, having been an associate member of North Carolina Main Street, there's the four points to downtown revitalization. And really, community branding and communication and marketing cover all four of those, but in particular, promotion. So early on in our history, we started helping communities create brand systems. And that has evolved over the years to us having full-time marketing and branding, people on staff that have helped communities across the country develop brand systems to help communicate to their citizens, but also market to people on the outside. So that's a little bit of background about us. What I want to do is share with you a little bit about what, what the outcomes of this project would be, and then answer any questions that you may have. And I've already talked about our company. These are some of the communities that we've worked on in North Carolina. I mentioned that we work across the country, done projects in over 600 communities, 42 states, and a number of projects across the board in North Carolina, but all told, about 50 community brands that have been developed by us in North Carolina. Most recently is, I think it's up there, is Dunn. Near you all, not too far from you all. We also worked in Clayton, not too far from you all. But most recently, we did a project in Dunn that was a strategic plan, but a community brand was part of that. And they're starting to roll that out right now. So first, I want to go over the elements of a brand system and then kind of walk you through the product, as I mentioned, that will be developing for you all. First, our objectives here with creating a brand system is really trying to draw out that positive story. What is it about the place that makes it special? And that really, we want to communicate to our residents as well as people on the outside. And that's the next thing, is really, we want this message, this market position, to be a unified message that's going to be relevant to locals as well as visitors and certainly for the investment community, so the business community as well. And then, you'll hear me say a couple of times here, is a brand system is not just a logo. It is a system. It's really that toolbox for you all to be able to communicate what's special about your community, tell your story, but also, you know, communicate to your locals, welcome visitors into your community, and then, you know, certainly recruit investment into the town as well. So that's the objectives. The elements, again, it's not just a logo, it's a whole system. The first thing you see certainly is that graphic identity, but really, it builds from that brand statement. What is our market position? What's our story we're trying to tell? But then, those graphic elements, the typeface, the color palette, a lot of times, we really try to drill into an icon that can be used to identify the place, a tagline. But really, when a brand becomes a brand is when it's applied to that full marketing system through brand extension and marketing collateral. So I'm going to, this is the only slide that's got lots of words on it, but it's very important because this is that first part of the process. It's what is our market position? What is our story to tell? This particular community is a small town in Virginia called Stanton. And you may or may not be familiar with this community, but hopefully, when we read this slide and we look at the brand for them, you'll understand what this community is about. So the brand statement, "If you like a place where a thriving city sets us grid into the foothills of the Blue Ridge Mountains, if you like striking views, spires, and domes, and hilly streets, if you like a city of history where restored buildings house hip restaurants, shops, and galleries, if you like the plays of Shakespeare or sustainable architecture." Stanton has the, the, oh gosh, I think it's the Great American Shakespeare Company that's there, and it brings in hundreds of thousands of people in their town every year, non-COVID years, certainly. "If you like a place where folks swap tips on how to restore historic homes and where people take to the streets to celebrate, if you like a place where independent spirit thrives and gifted artists and musicians, and where the solitude of the mountains is just a short drive away. If you like a place of learning where colleges and schools inspire our youth, if you like a place where high-tech meets down home, we are that place, the queen city of the Shenandoah, where the spires of the city are our crown. We are Stanton, Virginia, as you like it." So that market position, that narrative really kind of drills down to what we're presenting and what that tagline happens to be, Stanton, Virginia, as you like it. This statement, this brand position, really, for all intents and purposes, this is that elevator speech that you might give to, you know, someone that's coming to your community for the first time. But most importantly, this really is that framework for what our story is and what our marketing strategy happens to be. And so in Stanton, the logo we came up with here really builds off of that narrative. And there's four things to it. First is the unique pronunciation of the town's name. If you're not familiar with Stanton, you probably would have called this Staunton the first time you looked at it. So we played off of that with highlighting the U in the word. But also, it mentioned the queen city of the Shenandoah. They're known for their great Victorian architecture there. And that's where that, that very kind of contemporary-looking icon above the U, the crown above the U, really relates to that. And the other two things are the tagline, "As You Like It." That obviously is a direct connection to Shakespeare, and that's one of his more famous plays. But more importantly, it's the experience that they have in Stanton, Virginia. Whether you're a business owner, whether you're a resident, whether you're a visitor to the community, there's so many different layers to the experience that you kind of create your own experience there. So Stanton, Virginia, as you like it. So that's the market position and the initial graphic identity. Where we go from there is brand extension. So again, back to Stanton, you can see how we took the graphic elements of that initial overarching brand identity and then applied it to a number of different things that existed in that community. Every community is different. When we start to build out a system, this will be different in Zabulon because you're different than Stanton. But you can see they have the City of Stanton, which is the upper left. You've got their arts district. You've got their Downtown Development Association. Similar to your, your Main Street program that you're building here right now. But at the end of the day, when we talk about brand extension, we don't want a singular graphic identity to represent the place. We want that to be the platform, but we can grow it from there. So we want all of these unique identities that fall within this larger connected system. So that's brand extension. Here's another example in North Carolina, Graham County. This was a tourism-focused brand. Graham County, your natural destination that you see there in the middle. But we also, again, extended that brand identity to different communities like the town of Robbinsville, the town of Fontana Dam, as well as organizations, their economic development organization called GREAT, and some of the events that they have in the community. So again, it's a system. It's not the same logo over and over again. It's a connected system to market the place.
May I just stop you for a second?
Please.
For some clarification. So how would you say that you've created, going back to the previous slide with Graham County, how is this a cohesive brand? I'm having trouble understanding that just from seeing this. It doesn't look like there's one element that's pulling it all together.
That's a great question. In Graham, in particular, the, if you've been to Graham County, I'm sure many of y'all are familiar with Graham County. They've got a lot of public land out there. They've got national, national sites. They've got a lot of forest lands there. What led us to the central brand that you see in there is a little bit of this sort of WPA-style 1940s, 1950s poster that you would see for national park sites. That's a modern interpretation of that. They've got some sites there in their community. So that was the foundation. The way this is cohesive, to answer your question, is once we land on what that graphic identity happens to be, then we sort of explode those graphic elements and we start to apply it to different things that exist within the community. Most of that, the way that transpires is typically with fonts and colors. So you will see here on this larger system that the fonts and the colors are very consistent. It's all has the same color palette. There's two fonts primarily within this system that's used with all of those. And then, the overall style of the graphic and the design itself is very similar. So if you look at the towns that you see up here, Robbinsville and Fontana Dam, you can see those, probably more closely than the rest, connect right back to that Graham County graphic identity. So again, you want to create a system. Now granted, this is different because it was a county. A county is like a regional system as opposed to a town or a city, which is really more of a localized system. But in this case, and really, in all brand systems that we develop, we want to create that overarching brand identity. But then, when we start to do brand extension, we want to make sure that we create unique identities for the larger system, but the ones that connect back to that larger brand identity. And that was what we did here in Graham. That's what I showed in the previous slide with Stanton as well. What you don't want to do is have the same logo over and over and over again being repeated. And I think that'll, that'll be more apparent as we get into this presentation, particularly when I talk about sort of the organizational identity as well as a marketing identity.
Thank you.
So that's brand extension. So once we get through the market position, that overarching brand graphic and identity, then we go into applying the brand. And this really change, this varies from place to place to place. It all depends on what your needs happen to be. So in some communities, again, back to Stanton, it is a, in this particular community, it was a tourism-focused, visitor-focused brand identity. So we showed them how they could apply the brand system to their existing digital tools that they had. Now, we didn't design the website for them, but we sort of showed how this brand system could be incorporated into their existing website. And then, we worked with their, their web design team to incorporate that. Sometimes it's the arts. This is Newberry, South Carolina, outside of Columbia. They had this burgeoning arts sort of economy that was growing there in the community, and nobody knew about it. Because if you know Newberry, you think about the Opera House, the Opera House, the Opera House. It's a great landmark they have in their community. So this was a print and digital arts guide to the community that they've done a great job of deploying. In fact, if you drive down to South Carolina and you go into one of the, one of the visitor centers, you're going to see this here right now. Sometimes it's the, you know, the history of the community. This is, this is up the road. This is Smith River Towns outside of Martinsville. And it really was trying to draw out that really unique character and history of the mill towns that they have there along the Smith River in that county. What we have here are brochure covers and some ads that promote that heritage of the community. Again, this is something where we worked with the community where they already had some existing shopping and dining guides, and we just were redesigning the covers. But then again, we also created some, some ads to really draw out that, that character of the community, that history. Sometimes it's trying to draw out those assets. Again, when we were working in Graham County, their, their natural assets, their outdoor recreation assets, you know, are second to none. They were already working on a regional map of those assets, and we simply redesigned that brochure cover to them to incorporate that brand identity into it. Sometimes it's products. This is Southwest Virginia. This is another massive regional brand. It's actually 19 counties in Southwest Virginia. But we showed them basically how we can take this brand identity and apply it to products for them to sell. But more importantly, for them to sell to people to sort of be walking billboards for their area, their region. This, this particular one really was also outdoor recreation-focused, and they've done an excellent job of implementation on this. But really, when it comes to products themselves, there's, there's a lot of strategy to this. It's not just about selling a T-shirt for a few dollars. It's about, you know, certainly, when visitors come to your area, to have, if they have a great experience, to have them be able to take something away. But more importantly, it's for your locals. And really, when we get into community branding and town branding, this is what's most important. It's creating that identity, creating that graphic that instills community pride and that we can, you know, we can certainly provide, you know, products for people to use, whether it's T-shirts, whether it's house flags, whether it's bumper stickers, or whether it's water bottles. So that's a real strategic implementation strategy of a brand system. Advertising is huge. This is a community in, similar to you all, in Greenville, South Carolina. Traveler's Rest. It is a really neat little town, small town, crossroads town in Greenville County, South Carolina. It's halfway between, well, it's a little closer to Greenville, but it's between Greenville and Asheville. And it truly is the gateway into the North Carolina mountains. And that's what they always position themselves as. The outskirts of a metropolitan area like you all, they position themselves as the gateway to something else. Well, that's, you never want to market yourself as a gateway because you are basically saying, you drive through us to get to where you really want to be. So we work within the reposition themselves as really the base camp for that experience because they truly are. They're the base camp for that outdoor experience. And there's two pieces to this puzzle. Again, this, this probably is different than Zabulon. But here, they wanted to be, let's focus on visitors. Let's focus on visitors. Let's focus on Florida. Let's focus on Ohio. Let's bring people from the outside into our community because we have great things to offer, which is true. But they were neglecting 1.2 million people that lived right there in their market, and that's the greater Greenville-Spartan Anderson market. So they were going past them to market to the outside. Well, in our market, we always called them historically TR. Traveler's Rest is always TR, 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 TR. We told them, hey, rather than spend all that time and effort and money to get people to actually call you Traveler's Rest, let's embrace that and let's, you know, let's use that to our advantage. So there's two pieces of this. One is, you can see with the graphic, it's very simple, TR. Particularly the one in the lower left, that's the main identity, TR, lowercase. The brand, the tagline is get into your element. So it's about the periodic table of the elements. It's an active tagline that really is positioning them as, again, that base camp for adventure, that base camp for the outdoor recreation. And then, from a strategic standpoint, in terms of advertising, which is what this slide is, it's TR. It starts with TR. So track, trip, trails, travel. It starts with TR. And that was a campaign for, for that community. Other places, it's the unique history, and I think this is something that really would be relevant to your, to your community. These are a couple of ads that, in Beaufort, South Carolina, that really try to highlight the history of the place, but also brag on themselves. Market those accolades that you get, the top five best town for whatever it happens to be. Be proud of your community and let's, you know, let's pat ourselves on the back and market that. This is Dunn. I mentioned earlier, this is one of the more recent ones we've done. When you're talking about- When you're talking about ads, it's not just about marketing to the outside, it's also marketing to the inside. And so this, these couple of ads really are trying to highlight those local businesses that they have there in downtown to, you know, use this unified brand system to promote that downtown barber shop or to promote that local organic butcher shop, really to, again, the people that are going to use those and patronize those businesses on a day-to-day basis, and that's the locals of the community. Now, we move from advertising to environmental graphics. You know, whenever you create a brand, you can apply it to virtually everything that you want to that exists within the community. Hendersonville is a brand we've done years ago, and they've probably done a kind of a more robust application of the brand to the environment than any other place. But you can see they've guided in everything from gateway signs, which is always important, to wayfinding, again, which is, which is incredibly important, all the way to street furniture, chairs, tables, and even tree grates in the community. You can literally apply this to virtually anything that you have. And this is one of the reasons I mentioned earlier about we try to create a brand that has some sort of unique icons. Those unique icons really are the things that you can apply really to, to, to all these different applications there. You see the same thing. This is Statesville, have their logo on the tennis court, to Brookdale, Virginia, you can't see there on a water tower. And, and the ones on the upper right are not too far away from you all, Clinton, North Carolina, where they've applied it to the police vehicles. And then wayfinding. Wayfinding is, is, is another key component of this. I know this is something y'all have been talking about for a while. It's critical whenever you go through a wayfinding system that you create that brand identity to apply to that system. It's very important because it's visual within your community, but it also should connect back to all of your other marketing materials, whether it be your website, whether it be social media, whether it be anything that you really use. And particularly with wayfinding, it's critical because wayfinding is a capital cost. The vast majority of what I'm sharing with you today and what we'll provide for you all with this project are easy, quick, low-cost applications that can, can help you market your community. Wayfinding is more of a capital cost and, you know, your, your individual signs could cost, you know, it varies by place, but they could cost up to $6,000 a sign or more, particularly if you're talking about gateway signs. And I say that to say that it's important for you all to sort of figure out what that identity is before you, you know, expend those capital costs on a wayfinding system. There's some other examples from other places, and I just pulled these up because I know that that's something y'all have been talking about. That brand can be applied to things like Trailblazers with your directional signage that you see up there on the top, Traveler's Rest, Wake Forest. Wake Forest is one of the early brands that we've done in North Carolina, and they've done an excellent job of implementation. A lot of people don't think about banners as being part of your signage system. It really is part of that signage system. They're very strategic, both to show people where they are, which is what a typical sign would be, do, but also in places, maybe it's a, a, a high travel corridor, maybe it's an, an area where, you know, it's, it's, it maybe needs some, some improvement from a visual standpoint. Wayfind, or excuse me, banners can really be part of that visual wayfinding system that can improve a, you know, the, the, the look of a corridor. Banners, and I know that y'all have used these, I see them in your community, so you also know that these are something that are easy, quick, and that don't take a whole lot of cost to, to implement those. But all the way down to parking, too. We have to think about signage from a, from a strategic standpoint as well. We have to direct people to those parking resources. Gateways. Now gateway signs, that one on the top with Bedford, Virginia, that's, that picture was probably taken about a month ago. It's something that they've just, just done, implemented with, with the brand there on it. Incidentally, you can see from this, the, I could go into the creative behind that brand identity, but you can see the mountains of the community. They're known for the peaks of Otter. They're in the logo and you can see it off there in the distance. That's something that's very important. Tupelo, Mississippi, another one that uses our, our brand we created for them, and then you, North Wilkesboro, too, which is more of a simple thing there as well. So economic development, that's something that's also very important for a brand system. Again, communication and marketing, it's not just internal, it's also external. We want to try to promote the community as a place to invest. This is one we did a few years ago for Chatham County, and they're Economic Development Corporation. They've also done a great job of implementation. But what you see up here, all those pieces are part of an economic development business recruitment package. Each one of those ads are highlighting a particular business that has been successful there or a local hero. There's also marketing pieces that you can add to an economic development package that shows your, your, your business investment opportunities or maybe even your building sites. And the point of all this is, is all of those pieces of the puzzle, these things that you're already doing, most likely, you want to make sure that you use that consistent and connected brand identity to, to, as part of all those marketing tools. Now, this is what I was alluding to earlier about how we do brand extension. One of the things that, that we try our best to do is look at a community, look at a town much like a university. We did not obviously do NC State, but it's a good analogy for, for, for what I'm talking about here. When you think about a university like NC State, they have a distinct identity for the, the, the university that represents the academics of the university. They also have that athletic identity that really represents sports. For all intents and purposes, the, that athletic identity is the, the marketing identity for the, the university. That's what people are going to wear on their T-shirts. That's what you're going to see when, you know, people are showing their pride in their university. But it's very strategic and it's very important. You can see that these two, much like we were talking about earlier with Graham County, they are unique graphics, but they are tied to the same system. They have the same colors, they have the same exact font in both of those graphics, so they're tied together. We do the same thing for communities. So there's a governmental identity, which could be that official seal for the place. This is Troy. And then there's also that marketing identity. And again, it's very strategic, it's very important. You want to create this connected but separated system because you all here in this room sometimes have to make tough decisions. You know, there might be a zoning case, that might be adversarial that comes before your, you know, there, there may be a time when you have to raise taxes. And you don't want the community to deposit any potential negative feelings that they may have about some sort of issue in your community on their feeling of the place and their, their connection to the place. And again, that's why we try to create that distinction between that governmental identity and that community identity. And that community identity really is your marketing identity. Here's another example of that in Dunn. Again, one that we've just finished. You can see that Dunn, where community begins with the shield and the name of the town right there in the center, that's that community identity. But you can see that connected identity up there to the top, which is the city of Dunn. And then you can see how it's extended to their local Chamber of Commerce and their downtown development organization. All unique, but all part of the same connected system. So finally, everything I've shown you, this next couple of shot slides describes that from that initial brand graphic and market position through extension to different entities or events to applications like advertising, wayfinding, billboards. This is Damascus, Virginia, really cool little town in Southwest Virginia. This is Bedford. I shared with you their, their wayfinding, or excuse me, their, their gateway sign earlier. But again, taking that brand identity, that initial brand graphic and applying it to a larger system, and this is where that brand, that graphic, I should say, becomes a true brand system. So that's what we will do for you all. That's just some examples of some of the outcomes of this. I'll, I'll be happy to, if you want, I know y'all have seen our, our scope and the process. We can go over some of it in detail if you want. I can answer any of your questions. Ultimately, what you'll get from us when we finish this project is a branding and marketing plan. It'll be a report. We have a brand style guide that's part of that. You may be familiar with those, but basically it details all of the technical aspects of a brand, from the color palette to the typography, to all of the different ways that you should and should not implement the brand system. And then, of course, the, the, the main piece of this as well is, you know, how we can incorporate this throughout the community, but also we, we sign basically the rights of all of these materials over to you all. So there's no, you know, there's, there's no royalties that would be part of this process. It's going to be yours to own. This is a community process. We are going to engage your community, we're going to engage you all. You own this, not us. This is, this is part of you, and this is going to be a reflection of you. So that's pretty much it. That's what we're going to do, and I'll be happy to go back to any of these slides or answer any specific questions that you all have about the, the outcomes or about the process.
How long do you anticipate this process to take?
This usually takes about, probably about four to six months for, for, the way that we have it scoped here for you right now. It's, it's a turnkey process, so we get right into it, we develop the stuff, and really when we're finished, you're, you're, you can implement it from day one.
Yeah, if this was, if this were fast-tracked, how soon would it be until there are signs up along the road?
I mean, that's a great question. Fast-track, I mean, we could certainly, we could certainly go through our process quicker. And part of that, what you see on one of those slides is a sign typography. So we ultimately will design a sign typography for you all. These will be MUTCD-approved signage, so they meet basically the federal and state standards. So you could start implementing these right of way. What, what would have to happen next is two things, is the content for the signs would have to be determined. We can give you all some guidance on how that would be, you know, turn left for town hall, turn right for the community park, but also working with NC DOT on that because you'll have to go through their permitting process to get that. I'm not sure what the backlog is, to answer your question, for NC DOT is right now, but it's been our experience is, once you get to this point, it's a relatively quick process to be able to do it. And you, of course, you'd have to fabricate the signs and, and all of that as well. So, I mean, there's a community, I mean, a different state, but there's a community in South Carolina that we're working in right now, and they, in the middle of the project, before we were even finished, they started putting up signs. They fast-tracked it internally with their local DOT resources to be able to make sure they went through. That's the big thing, is getting approval for it, for the locations and, and the signs themselves. I know that doesn't really specifically answer your question, but it really depends.
Other question?
Make that cover. Unless you've got something else?
I don't have anything else. I appreciate your time, and we look forward to working with you all on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the board. I am excited to be bringing formally the final draft of our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And we have been working on this for quite some time now. COVID kind of delayed us a little bit, but we're really excited that it's finally coming together, and it's honestly come together at the right time, following in with the land use plan and the transportation plan and some other things that are going on regionally. So there is just, the timing has been great for this opportunity to bring this before you. And some of the information you may see, receive tonight may seem repetitive just because we've been working with our advisory board every step of the way. We've sent some information to you guys, we've put information out to the community. So as we did the community engagement, Drew will talk to you about how, you know, we then presented that to our advisory board and the community, and then we came back and they had another chance to provide feedback and so forth and so on. So some of this you've already seen before, but we think it's important to tie it all back together. And we're excited to share that our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, we've kept them along the entire way. We met last Monday, and they have recommended approval of the plan that you are receiving tonight. So it has their support. And something I shared with them, and I'll share with you tonight, this plan is basically your menu of recreation and opportunities for the next 10 years. And every year during the budget process, we order off that menu. And it, there are certain things that may come to our community, some opportunities that may come to our community where we might have to update this plan, and, you know, we, it's a living document, and that's what we'll continue to do. So they really appreciated that analogy, that, you know, it is your menu and we will order from it every year. And, you know, sometimes we have to massage projects and some get pushed out and some move forward. It just depends on what the opportunities are available to us in funding. So at this time, I'm going to recognize Drew Crumpton to get us started.
So, good evening. My name's Drew Crumpton. I'm a landscape architect and park planner with a firm called AECom. When I started this project in 2019, I was actually with Withers Rabinell, but due to a career change, I was actually fortunate enough to be brought back in to help continue this process and help get us where we are today. So I just want to briefly go through the project process and, you know, very briefly go through some of our preliminary findings that you all have seen before. But the project began with system inventory analysis and a community needs assessment, which is just our way of finding out as much as we can about the park system and the parks department, and as well as starting to establish the needs and priorities of the community. Most of that happened in 2019 and into early 2020, before we had a bit of delay. And then we resumed the project with the vision development, establishing those long-term 10-year goals, and then the associated recommendations and implementation strategies. So the majority of the presentation will be those two items, but we'll get started with talking a little bit about what we found from the system inventory and analysis. To get that started, we looked at the demographics of the town as well as prior plans and studies, just to get an understanding of the community and to make sure we're aligning with prior plans and plans that were ongoing. We then went out to each individual park and did a comprehensive evaluation based on a set of criteria. We also looked at an assessment of the programs, operation, and maintenance practices of the department. We looked at the level of service, which is how well, you know, parks from an acreage and facility standpoint, as well as access are performing for the community. And then with all that information, we did what we call benchmarking and, you know, look at comparable communities to see how Zebulon's doing with, with respect to peers. And some successes we found from that analysis, starting with level of service, is that the town is doing a really good job in providing a good quantity of both facilities and acreage. So the National Recreation and Parks Association sets recommendations for facilities, and the town currently has a surplus of every one, and that will actually continue despite the, you know, unprecedented growth that everyone's anticipating in the next 10 years. The town also has far and away more acreage than the recommendation per 1,000 residents. And so while that is, you know, a good place to start, it will help achieve, maintain a high level of service as the town continues to grow. Access level of service focuses more on walkability, how easy it is for people to get to parks from their neighborhood, and the town's also doing a good job with that as well, especially in the downtown area. Taking a look at the staff and maintenance practices and programs, overall, everyone's doing a really good job. The staff works really hard, they do a great job delivering high-quality services. The staff works really hard, they do a great job delivering high-quality services with the resources they have, programs are well-run, there are a lot of programs for a town of this size, which is, you know, great for the community, and the parks are generally very well-maintained. Some opportunities, one thing we noticed in looking at all the parks, especially some of the major parks, are they're located either in or near environmentally sensitive or natural areas. That presents some really good opportunities for further environmental education, as well as opportunities to implement some sustainable and resilient practices and to help improve water quality. In the parks across the system, all the amenities are generally, you know, very well-maintained in good condition, but some of them are starting to show some age. As these amenities age and have to be replaced, there's some opportunities to implement more flexible recreation facilities and amenities that can be adapted for a variety of uses. As one of the top priorities, you'll see from the needs and priorities assessment, accessibility and connectivity is going to continue to be something that the town is going to strive for as it continues to grow, as well as maintaining feasible level of services. You know, we mentioned facilities are in good shape, but, you know, acreage is at a good starting point, but as the town grows, trying to maintain that current LOS is probably not feasible, so developing a new target to strive for as we move forward. From staffing and organization standpoint, the town is somewhat understaffed for the services they're providing, and there is some strain to continue to provide the high-quality services that they have. This will continue as the town grows and demand increases. So, you know, utilizing park-type staff, contracting staff for more flexible functions, so you're freeing up the time of your full-time staff to do more planning and strategic operations. And then from a programming standpoint, the community center is currently serving the needs of the town, but as the town grows and demand increases, there's going to be immense strain on the spatial constraints of that facility. So while one of the long-term goals you'll see later is to eventually develop a larger facility, in the meantime, there are opportunities to utilize other facilities, as well as some of the parks, so, you know, getting the programs and the participants out into the system. So getting into the community needs assessment, we started by talking to the advisory board, getting some preliminary ideas of what they felt the needs and priorities of the community would be, and then we started talking to key stakeholders. We did topic-specific focus groups, and then we did stakeholder interviews with staff and elected officials such as yourselves. We held community meetings that had both in-person and virtual elements, and we had two surveys, one that was held online, that was available to all members of the public, and then a statistically valid community survey that was randomly stratified and mailed to select houses. So overall, we had more than 700 people participate in the entire process, which for a town of this size is very good. So common themes we saw across all our engagement, you know, the top 10. Number one is addressing anticipated growth. I don't even, I don't think anyone, you know, was surprised to see the demographic results, and I think the town and our residents are very well-aware of the growth that's coming. And, you know, most people felt that maintaining high-quality parks and program opportunities was very important in the future. Greenway trails, access to natural areas, not only is that a priority here, but that's something we see everywhere we work. That's normally way up at the top. There was a lot of focus on expanding and improving two parks in particular, Little River Park and Zebulon Community Park. There was a lot of discussion and awareness that the current community center, you know, may need to either be expanded or needs to have a larger community center somewhere else to accommodate future growth. There's a desire for more athletic fields, playgrounds, as well as additional special event venues, with particular focus on the downtown area. We heard a lot about not just a splash pad, but some sort of other water play opportunities. Dog park was something that came up a lot, and then from a programming standpoint, people just wanted more variety. And then when just thinking about the department, there was a lot of discussion about improved promotions of what's available to the residents. A lot of people don't really understand everything that's available to them, from both parks and from a programming standpoint. So really, you know, developing more of a marketing strategy and a clear vision for the future is important to many stakeholders. So, once we resumed the project earlier this year, we went straight into vision development. So taking everything we learned from the first two phases, we held two workshops, one with town staff and one with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and this was really focused on having a recap of what we've heard, and then from there, trying to come up with big ideas that really set the vision for the next 10 years. So we asked three questions of our participants. The first was to identify three to five community goals that they think should be established in the next 10 years, and then from there, really target specific projects, you know, connections or additional policy actions that can be taken to help achieve these goals. And then once those were all identified, we hold them back up as a group and try to prioritize those by identifying the top five. So this was held virtually, but we came up with a unique approach by using an online platform that allowed us to open up kind of like a drawing board before the workshop started, where people could come in and post sticky notes and answer our questions, they could draw on the map we had there to really start to show some of the projects that they thought could be helpful in achieving the vision goals. And then when we opened up the workshop, we started talking about what had already been posted, and then posted new ideas, and really had a nice free-flowing discussion and really good participation. The next step with the vision was to take it back out to the public. The public had not seen a lot of the, or had not been exposed to the project in quite a while, so this was a really good opportunity to kind of refresh everybody's memory, talk about our vision ideas, and really get this part, this project back in the public focus. So we recorded a presentation that kind of recapped everything we had done, and then showed the vision ideas and the results of the vision workshop. We had pretty good participation in this as well, 523 views, 60 participants, and a good amount of comments and responses. Many people were in favor of the ideas we came up with, and a lot of the specific comments focused on things we had already heard from the needs and priorities assessment. So with that, we moved into developing a solid vision statement, and this was also, you know, pitched to the public. And the vision statement is to create recreational and cultural opportunities that enhance quality of life, connect our residents to positive impacts on health, wellness, social interaction, economic growth, and environmental stewardship. So along with that vision, we developed a set of goals, you know, that help achieve that vision statement. And the goals really are focused on continuing just to deliver high-quality services, high-quality parks, and high-quality recreation facilities. From a programming standpoint, we want to make sure that we're very inclusive, that we're offering something for people of all backgrounds. We want to continue to collaborate with economic development and downtown partners to continue to use parks as a tool to spark economic development. We want to make sure that the system is equitable, that everyone has access to a park or recreation facility from their neighborhood, and that we're, you know, really utilizing what our strengths are, and enhancing, allowing people access to these natural areas, enhancing these natural areas and creating a more sustainable community. To graphically depict these ideas, we developed Vision Map. And so this is really what we think the park system can look like in the full 10-year build-out of some of our ideas. Some of the things we focused on were priority greenway connections, so they're taking the already extensive greenway plan and really highlighting about 10 miles of really key connections that are going to help get people from either a park to another park, or from an economic activity center to a park, or from their park to a neighborhood. And then from there, you see the green line through the middle, we're calling that the Green Spine, and that's really, of all the connections, that one we feel is the strongest. It runs from Little River Park to Five County Stadium through downtown, and it provides, you know, a great place to connect into future parks, as well as future greenway connections. To address future level of service gaps, which is what you'll see with the parks with the circles around them, based on where we think the growth is coming, or where we know the growth is coming, we positioned future parks so that they're addressing current level of service gaps, and also, and so that they'll be in locations where we know people are going to be living and they're going to need recreation services. We've also had areas where we think we could have potential trailheads, as well as properties we've identified that could be future parks. So this is really just the overall graphic vision of what we want our park system to be. And so within that graphic vision, to break out some of our ideas, we developed vision subsystems. They focus on neighborhood parks and open spaces, community parks and athletic facilities, natural areas and sustainability, programs, community health, and special events, and connectivity and access. And so within each of these, we have another set of objectives, and we develop some concepts that go along with these as well, so we can have more visual representations of some of our ideas. For neighborhood parks and open spaces, you know, we're really focusing on providing open space in parks within proximity of people's neighborhoods, and providing strong connections to those parks. We want to ensure that both current and future neighborhoods continue to have access to these facilities. And we also wanted to focus on the downtown area. There's already been, you know, some great progress with development of the alley. We want to see projects like that continue, and then eventually, you know, the development of a park downtown that can help host special events. So we have the, you know, concept of the alleyway shown here. Community parks and athletic facilities focuses, you know, primarily on Zebulon Community Park, but also, you know, how people are going to access larger community-serving facilities such as athletic fields, larger natural areas, walking trails, or destination playgrounds. So the idea of Zebulon Community Park is to show the way that this could potentially be expanded to consolidate athletic facilities. So you have a completed baseball wheel, you have soccer, multi-purpose fields, and a lot of support amenities. So this really comes, becomes the hub for, you know, all athletic events, all larger events, and takes some pressure off the other parks in the system. There's also been a lot of talk throughout the process of developing a new indoor multi-use recreation community center to help accommodate additional programming needs and growth, and that could potentially include water-based recreation or aquatics associated with that. For natural areas sustainability, a lot of this focuses on the Little River corridor area anchored by Little River Park, so we want to continue to provide access to natural areas and implement environmental education opportunities where possible. Our concept of Little River Park relies heavily on natural education opportunities, whether that's a nature center, or a wildflower field, or, you know, more facilitated access to the river itself. We also, you know, recognize that the Little River corridor is a great opportunity for regional connectivity, especially through partnerships with Wake County or other adjacent municipalities. With Little River Park as the anchor, you have the opportunity to, you know, connect through the corridor south, to, you know, move to the Wendell Zebulon Open Space property and then potentially connect to Wendell. And then there's also the opportunity to go through the Little River Reservoir to head north and potentially connect to Rolledale. So we really want to see that corridor, you know, be a focus of future connectivity moving forward. For connectivity and access, it's really just continuing to respond to, you know, what one of the top priority needs was, and that's greenways and trails. And then, you know, aside from that, connectivity and access can be improved just by looking at, you know, gaps in walkability, gaps in park access, which may not be, you know, solved with a trail, but could be something simpler, just removing a barrier to access. Could be adding a sidewalk, or improving a sidewalk, or a crosswalk. And then, you know, once this network begins to begin to establish, to begin to develop signage and wayfinding that ties into the park system, as well as, you know, town-wide branding efforts that are currently underway. Program, community health, and special events, a lot of this just really focuses on what's currently going on. As we mentioned, the town's doing a great job in offering a lot of great programs, but as the population grows and diversifies, it'll be strained to offer more programs, a greater variety of programs. So it's really just ensuring that you have the capacity, both from facilities and from staff resources, to be able to accommodate that, and then continue to coordinate townwide special events. That seems to be something that's been very successful, and we'd like to see that continue. All right. So we've gone through a lot of great ideas, and great ideas do come with a price tag, unfortunately, but as part of our process, we developed a cost estimates to go along with the vision. The, this cost estimates are built based on each individual park and the needs we establish through our park evaluations, as well as responding to the priorities we've identified through our community engagement. The total cost estimate for the full vision is just south of $60 million. What we should note is that about $13 million of that focuses on existing parks that you already have, and just ensuring that those are updated, they continue to be high-quality, and they continue to provide access for current residents. Most of the bulk of the cost estimate, the 46 million, is for proposed parks, open spaces, and facilities, which includes, you know, expansion of Zebulon Community Park, it includes the development of a future larger community park to accommodate an additional community center, as well as all the greenway connections we discussed.
Where does Little River fall on this?
Little River is actually within the existing parks. Breaking this down by subsystem, we'll discuss it as we just discussed, the biggest chunks are community parks and athletic facilities, and then programs and community health. Again, that includes large community parks, as well as a large community center. I do, would like to note that a lot of the low-hanging fruit that can be achieved is in connectivity and access and natural areas and sustainability. Those price tags are not quite as high, but they do have a big impact on people just being able to get to what's already there, as well as improving the quality of your parks and the context around them. We've even further broken this down, just to get a picture of where the biggest chunks of the money are coming from. About 75% is in new park development, the multi-use center, and trails and greenways. When you add land acquisition to that for future parks, you know, that, that leaves only about 15% of the total cost focused on your existing parks, but that really goes a long way, because that is the full renovation improvement of all existing parks, so that we ensure those parks remain high-quality and also give upgrades to help with future So obviously, these are some big numbers, and, you know, implementation of this will require public input as well, but for that reason, we did include questions in our surveys that asked, you know, how, how people were willing to, or how much people were willing to fund, you know, for additional park improvements. And I think it's important to note that only 20% of all the people responding said nothing. So 80% of people at least would be willing to commit some additional money towards improving the parks. Looking at specific funding mechanisms, grants are always the most popular one, which is no surprise that that's people's first choice, but we did think it was interesting that the top second choice was Kaplan Group of Bonds for Parks, which really would be a great way to implement some of the larger, big-ticket items. So after we developed the cost estimates and, you know, had an idea of more of the line item projects that we wanted to move forward with the vision, we had an implementation workshop with the advisory board. So again, this was held virtually, and it was similar to the vision workshop, where we just simply asked three questions, you know, from the projects that we've identified right down to your top 10 priorities. Then we hold them back up, and we narrowed that down to the top five priorities, just to get an idea of what people really felt were the most important from the projects we'd come up with. You know, in addition to that, we also asked what policy changes or program needs we felt needed to be implemented into the future. So that leads us to the priority projects, and no surprise, and this is very typical, but the focus was on improving existing parks. So as you'll see in the phasing, that really had an impact on the way we, you know, move forward with this. The most single intriguing park or project was the east-west greenway connection that we called the Green Spine. They felt that was really important into setting the stage for future developments and future projects. Cohesive park branding and signage, you know, really tying everything together was very important, as well as continuing to develop the downtown park ideas and the alleys.
So the prioritization of this was solely from the seven members of the advisory board, or was this the community aspect as well, the respondents from?
This was with the advisory board and park staff.
Ah, all right. Thanks.
But it was informed by community input. So again, at the implementation workshop, we went through, you know, here are the community's priorities, this is what we heard, and then moved forward with the advisory board. Again, going back to greenway access in neighborhoods, community expansion of Zebulon Community Park to accommodate additional athletics, activating park programs, taking park programs out of the community center into the parks, and then Little River Corridor was again a priority. So with the priority projects identified, we moved into the phasing plan. And based on funding considerations, we propose that the total 10-year project improvements out of the $60 million would be just south of $50 million. And that leaves about $9.5 million left over in the 11-plus-year total, which, you know, would either be beyond the 10-year vision timeframe, or would be opportunistic projects that came up if, you know, specific partnerships or funding opportunities became available. So you'll see the phases increase as we go along, but the first phase is the near term, the one- to three-year total, and that focuses almost exclusively on existing parks, and includes Little River Park, as well as some development of downtown alleyways and moving towards having a downtown park. The midterm continues the improvement of existing parks, but begins to add additional facilities to the existing parks and to start to set the stage for development of new parks through some land acquisition. And then the last phase, the $35 million chunk is a lot, is a bit more aspirational, but focuses on the development of new parks, as well as the initiation of the development of a new multi-use recreation or community center. So when considering funding, we looked at, you know, the parks newly implemented CIP that starts this year, which, you know, we took into consideration, as well as the half-cent tax for walkability that's available each year, money that's currently available for greenway projects. Along with this master plan, we've also conducted a park or a recreation impact fee, which we'll see on the next slide, but, you know, potential revenue from that could help fund a big chunk, particularly in the existing park improvements. And then we also identified several grants that we could target over the next 10 years, you know, that you can stack those grants to provide even more funding for your project, and leverage other funds such as impact fees to make. and leverage other funds such as impact fees to make yourself even more competitive for those grants. We also acknowledge that partnerships with developers and other agencies are going to be critical for a lot of this implementation. And so with that, we funded a very good portion of the short-term and medium-term projects without the consideration of a parks and recreation bond. The long-term projects, we do acknowledge, are a lot higher ticket items that will require some additional funding. And down the road, it may be feasible to consider going down that path. Going back to the impact fee analysis, as I mentioned, that was done in conjunction with this master plan. The impact fee analysis took in consideration all of the proposed improvements, as well as population projections and housing projections, and determined what could be the maximum fee. Taking that maximum fee, and then considering how we would like to approach this with a mixed funding mechanism, so not relying on one single funding source for everything, using those grants, using impact fees, using other available CIP funding, as well as looking at comparable communities in the area and what their impact fees are, and taking into consideration that we don't want to have a negative impact on future development, our proposed impact fee ranges for this project are somewhere between $3,000 and $3,500 for a single-family unit, and somewhere between $2,500 and $3,000 for a multifamily unit. And that helps achieve the number you see on the previous slide that we apply towards our short and medium-term funding. So moving forward with our recommendations for funding priorities, continue to refine the department CIP, and continue to prioritize projects. Sheila mentioned this is a living document. Things change quite constantly. So each year is important to not only revisit our implementation plan, but revisit the CIP and what's proposed out of this. Continue to utilize available funding for greenways and walkability. We recommend that the recreation impact fee move forward as well. As these projects are implemented, particularly the larger projects such as expanding Zebulon Community Park or developing a new community park to house a large community recreation center, we want to make sure that we're using a phased approach. So it's a little more broken out and achievable, taking steps, even small steps, necessary to get the process started. So it's not all just trying to do one thing at once. And then, of course, just considering other funding opportunities, being very aggressive with grant applications, and in the future, considering the pursuit of a general obligation bond, which begins with just determining if that's something the public would even go for. So that starts with interest gauging, as well as educating on them on what that would entail and what would it end up funding. So having this plan in place is a good start to that, but there definitely will need to be work if that's the direction we want to head in. For programming, again, we talked about moving programs outside the community center, and then really it's just continuing to keep doing a good job with the things you're doing. Continuing to grow programs for youth and special events, new programs that focus on incoming adult seniors, and particularly families, looking for opportunities for aquatics, programs for special needs, and then outdoor and nature programs as well. And in growing these programs, it's important to have a plan, ensuring that you have adequate staff, both full-time and part-time, and volunteer to help meet the needs. Market the programs really well, make sure people know what's out there and what's available to them, and then track what's going on with the programs, so that as you develop your program plan, you have some metrics to tie back to, so you know it works and what doesn't. The expansion of facilities and programs will definitely have an impact on operation and maintenance. We mentioned that resources were already somewhat strained, and that will only continue as the town grows and demand increases. Continuing to utilize part-time and contracted staff will be important. And then just like programming, develop a detailed plan for maintenance for both current and future facilities to ensure you have the right resources. From a policy standpoint, we mentioned earlier that the LOS targets may need, especially for acreage, may need to be rethought, because 27 acres would require about 300 additional acres in the future, and which may not be feasible. So we felt like 15 acres per 1,000 residents was a good target to maintain. That's about an additional 100 acres. So even with the potential expansion of Zebulon Community Park, that takes a big chunk of that. And 15 acres is still well above the NRPA average agency acres level service. And with access, looking at walkability, we feel that one mile is a good target for 2030. So each resident in town will be able to walk a mile to achieve, or to access, a meaningful park or an open space. The aspirational would be one-half mile. So that is already occurring in some places and will continue to occur. But as we move forward, trying to have that one-mile baseline for new development will be key. In thinking about new parks and open spaces, developing a land acquisition strategy, targeting specific properties that could be of interest, and keeping track on those, and positioning yourself for opportunities when they come available. One thing that we thought was really cool during the workshop process was that someone mentioned that the Parks Department is often the first agency that new residents interact with when they move to a town. And so we thought it was important to create a community member outreach program for incoming residents, since there will be a lot of incoming residents. It really, it would make a big impact on new residents to come in, to have a very positive interaction with the Parks Department, which reflects well on the town, and to just make everybody feel welcome as they move to Zebulon. Increasing branding, messaging, and marketing, not just for the department, but tying to the town as a whole. And then, as new residents move in, a large majority of them will be adults with families. And so continuing to engage adults and families, and thinking of unconventional or creative pop-up opportunities just to introduce people, tying into that new community member outreach. So it really becomes a welcoming place for people to move to. So that is about all I have for you, and we'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Question? Anybody have any questions or comments?
Sounds good to me.
Yes, ma'am.
I think you did a good job.
I'm sorry, did somebody have a question?
I just said it sounds good, what he did, I liked it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. You did a good job.
Before I turn this over to Mike, I just wanted to share with you kind of what our next steps are. So last month in your one-on-one meetings with Joe, I gave you a copy of this final draft and walked you through a lot of this key information, and I let you know that I was available if there was any questions that you had. So I will continue to be available in the coming weeks. So feel free to reach out to me. I would love the opportunity to talk, play Zebulon with you, and talk with you about how we've been engaging. There's already people invested in what's coming out of this plan. So we would love to continue to share that information with you. So as far as next steps, on September 13th, unless we kind of hear otherwise from the board, we intend to bring this before you as a business item to adopt Play Zebulon, the Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Master Plan. And based on being able to move forward with an impact fee study, that's a document that needs to be adopted separately, and it would also, to implement, would require a budget adjustment in your fee schedule. So that's going to require a public hearing, and it would also require, our ordinance also would require that the planning board be involved and would approve the implementation of such impact fee. So as long as tonight you don't indicate that you have any reservations with an impact fee around the amount of $3,000, we would intend to schedule that joint public hearing for September 20th, with an impact fee study coming before you for adoption, and a budget fee schedule change on October 4th. And then the next steps from there for you is actually the next step of implementation. That impact fee study will be huge for you, because as you heard, that could potentially be $12 million to implement new park opportunities. But in October, your work session, we will also bring back before you some CIP discussions, because if you recall, you approved a pocket of money for us to implement moving this plan forward. So we can have those discussions and look at the projects and what would need to be done to move forward. So be thinking about that, because that will help me know what to bring before you in October, so that October work session will be on your CIP projects. And in November, your work session, we will talk about operations and programs, and how we are preparing as a staff to implement some of the things that we saw in here, and just kind of get some feedback on some different priorities and programs and events and operations. So with that, if you don't have any questions for me, I'll turn it over to Mike. Thank you again.
Okay. Okay, the next item is Development Ordinance Text Amendments. Mike?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. The next item is a discussion regarding several text amendments. As you recall, the comprehensive, or sorry, the Unified Development Ordinance was approved in late 2019 and became effective in January of 2020. As we go through the actual use of this document, we often discover things that either slip through the cracks or the situation has changed, and we need to make modifications to best address this. The discussion tonight is more of a, kind of a, large-scale discussion. As with all text amendments, I'll have to go through the joint public hearing process, planning board make a recommendation, and ultimately, it will come back before you for adoption. Right now, we're looking for a joint public hearing, possibly in September, with adoption in October for these items. The first is downtown building design. There's been some concerns regarding some of the design of the buildings in the context of minor modifications that don't warrant set plan approval or building permit approval. The new regulations that would be put in place, we create a staff approval process that would be triggered of during one of two steps. Either when somebody comes in for the, essentially the approval to open up a new business, or if they come in and they're requesting to do some modification. This isn't going to be an overly rigorous process. Essentially, it's going to be making sure that folks don't take the building out of the context of downtown. Some communities have like a full historic district, a local historic district, that has very tight regulations. This will be more in making sure that it is consistent with the context and the character of the downtown area. Situations like not painting the building bright pink with yellow polka dots, that type of thing. But it will be the first review to make sure that it is in keeping with the intent and the context of downtown. The next of the modifications is actually several new uses that are being put in for a combination of reasons. One of which is we received concerns with an overabundance of certain uses that could potentially have a negative economic impact on the surrounding property values. One way to address this is instead of prohibiting those uses from occurring in downtown, we require separation distances from those, as well as similar uses. As such, we'd be introducing a new use of pawn shops, being that we do have one in downtown, as well as vape and tobacco shops, being that we have a couple of those in downtown. The new regulations would require that they have a 300-foot distance separation, not only from other uses under the same category, but also other sensitive uses that'd be similar in context to what we do for family care homes, or games of skill, or adult uses. That way, we make sure that we're not prohibiting them from locating in our downtown districts, but we're making sure that we don't have that over-concentration. And a lot of that goes back to a U.S. Supreme Court case, Detroit versus Mini Theaters, that the U.S. Supreme Court determined that when those uses have a negative economic impact on the surrounding property values, the town can require those distance separations. The other two uses are the exact opposite of things that we'd like to see in downtown. Last Thursday, there was a great activity where we met with several artists within the community, and there's an increase in interest in the arts community, combination of the interest through the Zebulon Downtown Arts Council, as well as others looking into the area. And in looking at this, we realized that we don't have art gallery as a permitted use within our downtown core or downtown districts. Additionally, a new trend that's emerging is kind of this experiential destination locations, where it's not just you're looking at art on the wall, but you're seeing how it's made. These can be everything from sculptors to woodworkers. There's a wide range of activities that could take into consideration. With the artist studio use, this would allow for not only gallery space for them to create the art, but also retail space for them to sell that art that's produced on-site. It would also include protections from the neighboring businesses and property owners to make sure that it's not creating negative impacts to them, in terms of fumes, noise, vibration, those type of things. All those can be done through building code modifications, but it really allows for one to experience the creation of art, as opposed to just buy a piece hanging on a wall. The other is, or the next one is clarification of an existing regulation. We currently require guest parking for single-family detached units, as well as townhome units, at 1, or at .25 parking spaces per unit. So essentially, every four dwellings, we require a guest parking space. There's been some confusion amongst some of the developers on what this really means and where it can be located. The new language would be very specific, that these parking spaces either need to be located on-street in actual marked designated locations, where that cross-section is designed to make sure it accommodates for those guest parking requirements, or it'd be located on an HOA common area. That way, we make sure that these folks are being parked in an appropriate location. It also protects travel lanes, because we have some folks being like, "We have plenty of guest parking up on the street." Well, that street, that cross-section wasn't designed to accommodate on-street parking. As an example, this is the recently approved Pony Road Plan Development. They took both approaches as part of this development. It's kind of hard to see, but on the left-hand side, you'll see where that curb line actually jogs in to create several on-street parking spaces, and then up by the amenities center, they have several off-street parking spaces, and in each way, maintain land. On top of that, we require that these spaces be within a quarter-mile walking radius of all of the dwelling units. Quarter mile is typically what's recognized as what is walkable for most folks, unless you're a planner, then it's a couple miles, but that's beyond the point. In this situation, with a quarter mile, making sure that folks have those opportunities protects the travel lanes for emergency service vehicles. We have had experiences where there's been a situation, and Chris and the fire department have unfortunately had to request vehicles be moved in order to allow for the truck to go through. The next is probably the biggest change. As you're aware, we are growing at an extremely rapid rate. And with that, we've received an increase in inquiries about particular uses, specifically auto-dominated uses. These are uses that would typically have a drive-through or an auto-entry into the building, such as an oil change place. One of the ideas is to pick up what some of the other communities have done in terms of requiring them to meet more of a mixed-use design, where when you first see it, it doesn't necessarily scream auto-dependency. As an example, this is a Jiffy Lube located in Raleigh. It has the bay doors facing the street, and the bay doors become almost an advertising environment. This has no pedestrian connectivity to the sidewalk, and is really dependent upon, you're going to drive your vehicle there, you're going to go through these bays, you're going to go at the other side. If this used to were to ever change, it would have to go through some substantial modifications in order to make this work for anything other than an oil change place. But we have this right up the street. This is a new Firestone in Knightdale. One of the requirements that they have is auto-dependent uses must have a two-story appearance. And more so is those garage doors are oriented, so they're in the least visible location from the public right-of-way. On Knightdale Boulevard, as you're heading eastbound, these garage doors face the east. So with the median in it, it creates a very low visual impact. However, from the street, as well as from the adjacent street, it has that two-story building design. The upper windows here are just spandrel glass. They're not actually real windows, but it changes the perception and the character of what this is. This Jiffy Lube paints one picture, where this paints an entirely different picture. And there is the other opportunity to take it a step further. This is Woody's Auto Repair in Davidson, North Carolina. The entire building is occupied by one use, this auto-dependent use. But as you look at it, it looks like a block of your traditional downtown-scale buildings. All of the bay doors are in the back. One thing that is unique with this, as opposed to the Firestone, is those upper windows are actually windows. When you get inside the building, it is a completely open vaulted area, so it's able to fully accommodate all of the lifts. And additionally, those windows provide natural light into the service. light into the service area. This creates an entirely different distinction compared to this. The others, let's talk about fast-food restaurants and drive-thrus. Growing up, almost every McDonald's I ever saw looked like this, unless it's one of those really cool throwback ones with the giant arches going over it. This was their stereotype. They would say, "You have to build this, or we're not going to come to your community." Well, with all the product types, it does change with the different times. This is currently the new prototype. As they're working, they're going to say, "No, corporate requires that we do this." Okay, what about that? That still meets a lot of the same design elements, but it's a two-story. This really kind of changes the perception where this could be a McDonald's, this could be several different uses, this could have a restaurant and an art gallery on the second floor, but it really kind of changes the context of what that building is. And of course, we'll say, "Okay, yeah, it's still keeping with the intent of the prototype." What about that? This is the McDonald's in Freeport, Maine, and this has been one of my favorite case studies. Back in 1984, McDonald's wanted to enter the market in Freeport, Maine. As you know, Freeport, Maine is the home of LLB, and this is in close proximity to one of the interchanges that leads to the corporate headquarters. Their regulations at the time prohibited tearing down of particular structures. Typically, it was these old Victorian or Italianate-style homes, where they required business, businesses to integrate into those homes, as opposed to tear down and rebuild. They were adamant, "We need to build our corporate prototype, we need to build our corporate prototype." They finally said, "Well, we appreciate that, the neighboring community's down the road, here's the contact for them." And it went back and forth for a couple years, there was lawsuits, each lawsuit, the town won, because it stuck to its intention. Finally, McDonald's decided, "Okay, we'll work with this." They built an addition onto the back that was keeping with the context of the building, and actually incorporated their design. Once you walked into that building, it maintained a lot of the same floorplane features, has traditional dining room tables and dining room chairs, and once you get to the back wall, or where the back wall of the house was, that's where the ordering window is, and everything back behind that is your typical McDonald's assembly line-type process, and coolers and such. The next year, they actually put this on the cover of their corporate magazine of how they are a good community partner. But it goes to show that even McDonald's, a global corporation, will work with municipalities to make sure that it meets the context and character of what that municipality is. And it's not just McDonald's, there's a lot of other fast-food restaurants that take into similar contexts. This is a Jack-in-the-Box, where this particular regulation required it to have a minimum height. Yes, it's very boxy, but it could incorporate some other uses beyond, or some other brands even, beyond Jack-in-the-Box, depending upon how those architectural designs are put in place. The regulations that are being proposed would essentially require businesses meet the mixed-use code, or the mixed-use design regulations, if they are an auto-based business, specifically if you have a drive-through or garage doors for vehicle entry, to make sure that we're maintaining a particular character or style that we would like. Finally, we do have a whole host of corrections. There's also a correction to Chapter 3 in terms of a setback regulation. Chapter 4, there's the use table, there's several residential uses that are mentioned in the DTC that provide confusion, because they're intended for second floor and not first floor. Chapter 4, there's regulations pertaining to automotive sales and rental. Chapter 5, there's access to lots, this is in response to a recent confusion over duplex, where there's a provision that actually was not applicable, where we're taking that confusion out to clean it up. Chapter 5, also institutional design regulations. We have all these institutional uses, and I should also mention that there's going to be adding industrial uses to those, where we don't have any design guidelines for those. There were, those two provisions, or those two use types, were left out of the design regulations. And then finally, the commercial design exemptions on what particular uses would be exempt from the commercial design regulations. And with that, I am available if you have any questions.
I have one, and it doesn't concern me, I'm not worried about it, but how did you come up with 300 feet? Is that what our blocks are? Because a typical block is a little bit longer than 300 feet, I think.
That is correct, and we, I looked at all the uses in downtown, where those uses are located, and figure out, okay, what are the uses that if these uses concentrate together, they're going to have that negative economic impact on the surrounding property values? And determine that if they are closer than 300 feet, they end up on the same block, whereas if they're further than 300 feet, they're at least a block apart. And I should note that it's not just separation from the same uses. This would require that 300-foot separation distance between, let's say, like a pawn shop and a vape shop. So it would allow for a couple of those uses in downtown, but not a concentration of uses.
Right, but it would be vape-to-vape and pawn-to-pawn, not pawn-to-vape?
It would be, that separation would be pawn-to-vape, pawn-to-school, pawn-to-daycare.
So you couldn't have a vape shop any closer than 300 feet to a pawn shop?
That's correct.
Really?
Yep, as drafted.
I'm not sure I agree with that one, but, I mean, I can understand the separation of pawn and separation of vape. But why would you do vape to pawn?
We were looking at what the past practices were based on the games of skill use, where that separation distance isn't specifically to those two uses, but also other uses that either that use would have a negative impact, daycare, schools, churches, those type of things. And built upon that, where if you have that concentration of activity, where you have folks, let's say, a tobacco and vape shop next to a pawn shop, well, if you have those, that concentration, it could have that negative economic impact.
Can you say so?
Is the 300 feet measured as the crow flies, or by linear travel on our street?
As the crow flies. It uses a buffer radius based on our GIS system.
Okay, and then what about a brewery that sells tobacco or vape products as a side business in the back?
If it is a clearly ancillary activity, in terms of both square footage, as well as the income production, those could potentially be accessory components to a primary use, but it cannot be that primary use. So let's say if hypothetically, a distillery wanted to put in a cigar shop in the back, that could potentially occur based on, or, but it's going to be dependent upon what percentage of square footage, as well as income production, comes from that.
They kept it in the 10%, 15%, 20% range?
Typically, yeah, that'd be acceptable.
So, building upon that, and going back to the games of skill, technically, like every, every building downtown could have games of skill, as long as it's not a majority of their square footage or their income?
There's some state regulations that pertain to that, that are separate from our UDO. In terms of an accessory component, there is that possibility. We do have a couple of gas stations, as an example, that have those games of skill. Couple of years ago, there were some state regulations, that's more of a legal question for the town attorney, in terms of how the state and the law enforcement agency would regulate that component. But from a zoning category, we don't have those separations from accessory uses.
Okay, thank you.
So, when you picked out vape and pawn, why didn't you put bars in there? You think it's okay to have bars lined up and down the street?
Part of that was looking at the economic impacts of the surrounding, and what a lot of other communities have done, and the perception of alcohol-serving establishments is changing amongst a lot of demographics for growing communities. It is something that some communities have implemented, but the majority of the communities that I researched, not only in North Carolina, but across the country, are actually going away from having distance requirements for those.
Well, I'm not against bars, I'm just asking the question, because your description of why you wanted vape and pawn, I can understand vape-to-vape, pawn-to-pawn, I have a problem with vape-to-pawn, you know, I just do, I think that's going too far. But, aside from that, using your description of why, it seemed to me that there are other businesses that could have that effect. You mentioned churches, but we don't allow churches downtown, and haven't for years, primarily because they sort of parking for various events, funerals, whatever. So, anyway, that's just some of my thinking on it, and some of my concerns. Leave it at that.
And so, when this comes before us, it's going to have, I'm assuming, some kind of chart, or we're going to be able to look at what uses are compared to, you know, like what industry, like, the mayor was saying, we'll be able to say, "Well, if you have a vape shop, you can't be within this, this, and this?"
What will be coming before you as part of the joint public hearing will be the actual verbiage that'll be in the ordinance, and I'll have, not only the uses specified in the use table, but there's going to be the additional requirements in Chapter, I believe it's 4.5, that's going to spell out, okay, here's the additional requirements, and we'll have that list of uses that must be 300 feet from.
Okay.
Looking into the future, any thoughts about restrictions on CBD, or it looks like medical marijuana is going to be in our very near future?
That's definitely something that we could review. I did look at bits of that in the context of what other states have done. California, Colorado, Michigan all have it legalized for recreational uses, and seeing what those communities have come up with. There's not a lot of data, being that that's still fairly new, that's part of the reason it wasn't included here, as well as it's still not permitted by state law.
Would we be better off to be thinking about this now, so that the moment that it's legalized, we don't have every single business downtown trying to sell that kind of product?
Yes, in terms of keeping an eye on it, but it's, it's best practice to wait till there's actually state law that would permit it, to best understand how that state law's regulating it, to determine how we're going to regulate it. As a case example, Michigan, when they approved it for recreational use, they didn't, their state law noted that has to be specifically permitted by the municipality for it to occur. There's a handful of communities that took action to say it was not permitted, and there's a handful of communities to say that it was permitted. Those communities that say it was permitted, that's one of those uses that they put in, particular distance separations. But right now, there's no consistency amongst those municipalities, because the scale, the context, and the environment amongst those municipalities are very, very different.
Thanks.
Okay, other questions? All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Downtown tree lighting.
All right, good evening again. We talked about this briefly at the end of our discussion last week in your monthly meetings with Joe, and based on kind of the mixed feedback that we got from the board, we wanted to come back to you, because we're kind of getting close to that. We got to move forward with this tree lighting, if that's something that the board would like for us to do. There's a lot of unknowns, a lot has changed since we met in July, and a lot has changed, even just in the last week. So, you know, I'm not going to go over what the state of COVID currently is in our state or in Zebion or Wake County, but I do just want to give you the specific information related to the downtown tree lighting. Downtown tree lighting currently is scheduled for November 19th, 2021, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. It was, it would continue to be downtown Rendell Avenue, on the 100 and 200 blocks and the side streets that are impacted with that. So kind of the same landscape that we were looking at when we did this event two years ago. In 2019, the attendance for that event was 4,000, approximately 4,000 people, and from the conversations we had, it brought a lot of our community members, but it also brought in people from outside of Zebion. One thing that I shared in our meeting were the changes in the entertainment industry, and that a lot of these artists, a lot of these sound production companies, they're not, their contracts used to be a lot more flexible, in the meaning, you had a certain amount of time where you could get out of a contract and you didn't owe money, and you only paid after the event ended. As far as municipality, we would pay after the event ended, and the production company that we paid for the band would handle paying the band the night of. That is not going to be the case, so there is going to be some responsibility if we were to move forward, and there are any state shutdowns, or any local shutdowns, and we're unable to do the event. If we've signed a contract to move forward, there's going to be some responsibility of about 50% of that contract, give or take. So, we have not pursued a contract just because we had a little bit of time and we wanted a better understanding, we didn't want to waste any of our vendors' times or the artists' time. Just so you are aware, we do track very closely NCDHHS guidelines, so they provide a lot of guidelines, they have provided a lot of guidelines throughout. Typically, for any of the guidelines that they provide related to parks and recreation, we've been getting the required and the recommended. The new for us is the should. So it was great for us, as we were planning things, to know for sure from DHHS, these were the things for safe operation of program, or safe operation of an event, you do these things and you're good. Well, when the state rescinded the social distancing and the mask mandate, and put it all on the locals, that required change to should, and you still get the recommended. So that puts a lot of like gray area in there for us, as far as, like, it was very clear-cut on what we had to do before. There are rapidly changing circumstances, you know, when we met a month ago, it was, you know, we're definitely interested in pursuing this, life was kind of back to normal, we weren't wearing masks, well, you know, effective last Friday, now we're wearing masks back in Zebion. There are going to be additional expenses related to COVID protocols, if we were to move forward, that we didn't necessarily plan for, if we move forward with a full-scale event. And I just, I'm not going to go through all of the items on the shoulds or the recommended, but I did highlight some things that we can't do everything in the should and recommended to operate this event, just from a capacity standpoint, from an effectiveness standpoint, and just like a technicality for me, it's important that, you know, we deal with our employees over vaccination and screening, but then there was no talk about doing that for our volunteers, but then we were told to encourage our volunteers to get vaccinated. Well, the concern I have with that is this event relies so heavily on our volunteers and our volunteer support. I would think that anything that we do with our staff, we would want to have that same expectation of the volunteers, because they're actually going to have more interface with the public than we would. So that would be something that, although it's in the should, and they don't say that specifically, I think that's something that would be smarter of us, and I don't know exactly how capacity-wise we could manage doing that, because a lot of these volunteers and these organizations, we don't know exactly which volunteers the organization is bringing in till the night of. of. So it's just more logistics that we have to think about. And it also talked about all patrons who are not fully vaccinated have to wear face covering and maintain physical distancing. Especially in our downtown, we have no way of knowing who's vaccinated or not vaccinated and implementing that and enforcing that. So there's no way to just not without substantially closing down our downtown areas and getting every nook and cranny so people can't cut in, and then they can only come in through a single entry point. There's really no way to single that out. And then a lot of the other things are very basic signage that we're all used to by now. There's also some things that, I'm not going to go back through the vaccination and negative tests of community members, but there's also some pieces, if you read through this, that are just going to have some impact on, like, we're going to have to have more portages than we would typically have to have because we want to limit lines. You're going to have to have more hand washing stations. You're going to have to have more hand sanitizing stations. There's a lot of things you're going to have to have more of. And then, when you have more of them, we're going to have to have more resources to keep them clean and stocked throughout and sanitized throughout the event. We would never be, for this event, it would not be realistic for us to do like a reservation for such an event. That would hinder the event, I think. There's also a piece in there where they talk about, like, guidelines related to bars and places that serve food, related to concession stands, and trying to navigate how that implies to, like, a beer garden if we were to have that, or food trucks at a major event like this. Though, that's another step that we just have to navigate on what our responsibility is recommended to be and what we could do from there. So what we wanted to do was present a couple of options for you. If you want to move forward with the full steam ahead, I mean, our department is ready. We love that event. We love being with the community. It's definitely something that we've been looking forward to being able to offer, and we were absolutely hoping that we would be able to provide that to the community. We need to know, really, the end of August. We need some indication from the board, because we need to book contracts. We need to get marketing put together. We need to work with our partners. There are a lot of moving pieces that we are really pushing it as far out as we can. Another option that we wanted to present is a scaled-back ceremony-only, go back to just Sycamore Street, be very just local performers, ceremony-only tree lighting, not have amusements and vendors and things like that. We have until late September to work with that because it is local. We can kind of start having those conversations and have people on standby. I do have personally, our department as well, has a lot of concerns with this option just because of expectation from our community that they come out. They're just being, having the expectation of that big event versus a small event. So that, there's a lot of concern from us there. Not that we're not willing to do it or willing to overcome that challenge, but it will come with some challenges there for us. The third option is to be virtual, somewhat like we did last year. We can grow upon that. We can always add pieces to it, but where, you know, where we can pre-light, bring in partners, we can bring in some performers, we can bring in Santa, we can light the tree, we can post it virtually. So that's another option. And of course, the fourth option is you could do nothing. Naturally, we don't want to do nothing. We would love to celebrate the holidays with our community. So I'll kind of leave it for discussion there, and I'm happy to answer questions. We've got Amy here as well.
You could do the second option and still have vendors at no additional cost particularly, couldn't you?
You could, but my fear in that sense was bringing in a bunch of vendors, and we're not going to bring this massive crowd. That, I think it's that managing expectation. And also, the reason why you don't want to do that big event is because you don't want the big crowd.
No, the idea I thought was to go with, well, my thinking was to go with scaled-back, like a DJ or something of that nature, because then if you had to terminate it and not hold it, you didn't lose as much money. And that was my thinking on a scaled-back one. I disagree with you with regards to the amount of people. I think that if we had a good DJ or local music and vendors and a tree lighting, we would draw a good crowd. Now, would they be disappointed? I don't know. But, it's the way it is.
I think more than anything, we kind of, like, do you want a full-scale event? Like, is that your preference? Do you, like, if you take out just the concern for the money, but in what you know now, and the, we know from last year, things will only get a little bit more concerning moving into November. So with what you know now, take the money aside. Do you want to do a full-scale event?
Well, I've had my say, so let's hear what they think.
Yeah, you know, as I look from here to Christmas, I know there's going to be Halloween parties, okay? Bars are going to be active. There's going to be Thanksgiving get-togethers, families, bars, having parties. Christmas time, there's going to be holiday get-togethers, company parties, et cetera. So it is going to happen. You know, watching the news tonight, I hear the hospitals are overwhelmed, are already talking about triaging, meaning they won't treat everyone that goes to the hospital, and I think they're probably going to hammer for a lockdown worse than last year. That's the bad side. I think we need to do something and take some precautions. And like Bob said, not a live band, but maybe a DJ, some music. I'm sitting here thinking outside the box, and I'm thinking, maybe you sell tickets to this thing so you put a cap on the attendance, first come, first served, to help pay for it. And if it does get canceled, maybe we could do something next spring and they still got the ticket. That way, you have a little bit more control, because you have a party and word gets out. You don't know how many people are coming.
How are you going to control with the ticket still being out there on, well, on my street, East Sycamore? People can come from anywhere. I don't think you're going to have enough people that are going to...
No, you have to figure out how many people you could contain, and that means that's how many tickets could be sold. And I'm just thinking outside the box, how could we control the number of people that come?
Think it's going to be real, I'm not saying it's impossible. I think it's going to be challenging to control entry in a downtown setting for a ticketed event. Not that it's not possible. Logistically, there's a lot to work through in closing that down and maintaining. It's going to take a lot of labor force to hit every nook and cranny to keep people from coming in. But I think, I mean, I like the way you're thinking, like, be creative. I just, I have a lot of concern with bringing, putting it out there that we're going to do something under the same title that we did two years ago and not doing it to the same level. I do think that there's some grace considering the COVID level, but I do have, I mean, there's a lot of expectation that's coming along with the downtown tree lighting at this point, because, I mean, we had such a great success.
Right.
And I think that that's a great thing. I want to do the event. I mean, we all, department-wide, we want to see the event happen. At the same time, we need to understand, because we've got to move on the planning side, like, do you really feel comfortable moving forward with planning?
Okay, I want to hear from the board. Okay, so Larry, did you have anything?
You know, the most frightening thing on here is 4,000 people. I'm not comfortable with 4,000 people downtown right now with what's going on.
I think we're getting hung up on, on it's either going to be 4,000 people or it's going to be this credit little event on East Sycamore Street. But that's what it feels like. It feels like, I mean, you're not going to have any kind of amusements, no vendors. Why even bother at that point? I mean, honestly, it seems like, if we're going to do that, then we might as well just have the mayor do the thing that he did last year, which I didn't even know was a thing, actually, until this past week, that that even happened. I don't think that we need to, you know, we can market it differently, not as, you know, the downtown Zebulon tree lighting extravaganza. I think that if we market it and we advertise it differently, then that's going to help manage those expectations. What do you guys think?
Well, I feel like trying to have a social event in an area where it is basically non-containable from a public health standpoint at this time is out of the question. I'm in favor for doing something virtually, market it that way, have different organizations come in, post it online or whatever, but as far as a gathering of people of uncontrollable numbers, totally opposed.
And I agree with Glenn. I would do it virtual. I just think this is going to be another COVID year, and just next year, maybe it'll be better. But that's just, that's my opinion.
Have we heard from the chamber about the Christmas parade, or I might have assumed that's not going to happen as well?
I'm not exactly sure what their final plan is.
If we haven't heard anything, I kind of feel like there's nothing that's going to happen at this point. We're getting too late in the planning of that.
It's tough against the wall, I think.
Yeah.
Annie, what do you think? You haven't said anything to say.
I think we should, you know, should have it, but I can't see selling tickets, because if we sell tickets, how do people know that we're going to have the ticket to sell? And then how many people we need to have downtown? How many people need to be downtown?
Well, I appreciate Larry thinking out of the box, but I don't think that it's very practical to put ticket sales together. And then what you have to do is have entry points all the way at all the entry points so people have to show you tickets. I just think that's going to be just really, really difficult to do. Now, if you're having it inside a community center, that would be one thing, but I mean, you're having it out on the streets. But I'm basically hearing Glenn thinks it ought to be virtual. I'm sort of reading Shannon that you're thinking that maybe. I don't want to put words in that.
Shannon thinks that number two is not a good option. That's what I think right now. I'm still formulating my own little thoughts here, but I don't like the idea of just doing a crummy job of it.
Well, I don't think anybody wants to do that, so I appreciate what you're saying. What I'm hearing, though, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that nobody's really buying into number one.
Great.
Yeah.
I think number one is no...
It's out.
Is everybody in agreement on that? If that being the case, then we have more time to develop.
Yeah, that's really what we needed tonight, because, I mean, the scaled-down version would look a lot like the downtown tree lighting festival looked before 2019. And so, that definitely gives us more time to kind of massage and potentially see what happens and bring back another option in September to kind of see where we stand. So, thank you.
We'll be waiting.
Before you, before you leave, Sheila, so if we were to do some kind of scaled-back something or other, we could certainly pick and choose if we wanted to do things. It doesn't have to be no amusements, no vendors, or is that what you're saying right now? Is that the scaled-back version is just basically going to be everybody standing out on the lawns, maybe somebody, a school comes up and sings, and then they flip the switch?
I think there's a mix. I mean, I couldn't put all the options on here, but I wanted to give enough of a start so I could get whether or not y'all wanted to move forward with a full thing or not. So, I mean, hearing feedback from you, continuing to work kind of with our partners and see what they're willing to do, we definitely have bought ourselves a month to figure out what a scaled-back option could look like, and if that's something we want to do versus doing a virtual.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have one last thing. Joe's going to give us an update on our meeting schedules, and then we'll be through.
Thank you for your perseverance tonight. I'll try to wrap this up quickly. So, September 6th is Labor Day. Town Hall will be closed. That traditionally is the time of your regular meeting, so that regular meeting is going to be bumped a week. So your regular meeting for September will be September 13th, and the time for that meeting is 7 o'clock. Because of that, the following week, you will have a couple of meetings within one week. You'll have the joint public hearing that you heard mentioned tonight. That's on Monday, September 20th. Again, that meeting starts at 7 o'clock. And then your work session that was originally scheduled, so that date hasn't changed, is September 22nd, so that's Wednesday. And again, in meeting with your revision to your starting times, that meeting starts at 6 o'clock. So I just wanted to get everyone in the room and anyone viewing on the same schedule. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Well, folks, then that wraps us up. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Set that.
We're out. Thank you.